Chris has been assigned.
I'm getting cafe on this album, so.
Everyone needs to be caffeinated.
That's right.
All right, welcome everyone. This is our commission work session for June. What is it? The twenty third, for June twenty third? Commissioner Sharon Bolo, I have Commissioner Jim Harvey, Commissioner Gage Ferrer with me today. Our first item is a discussion and or action through approval of the minutes for the commission work session held on June ninth.
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
And motion carries, item two. Discussion regarding Westbridge Meadows rezon proposal, Charlie Ewart, Rick Grover's Rick coming? Gary Mines? Will not be here.
Do we want to have Christie send the?
Yeah. Christie, if you can hear us, you can send the rest of them in. I know Chris is out of the office, but we probably should.
Liam should be coming.
I saw Corbin do that. I know he's here.
Mr. Wilkinson.
Mr. Harvey. Good afternoon.
Do you think we should wait? You're the one who asked if we had incoming.
Uh, no, I just was.
We're just curious.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll get started, Charlie.
Hey, we've got to wrap up in here. Yes, we need to go to the end of the table and we've got. Andrew Ferro down there as well. Andrew. I can all share. Just to hand out, so in today's conversation, I wanted to go over open spaces, buffers and whatnot. And then just follow up on any other questions you guys might have on this project. This is the Westbury project. It's the big one that's out on the west side of the river.
We're circling back to open spaces, right? We got sidetracked two weeks ago.
And that's a pity.
Took our own path.
I was just glad that I was prepared to talk about it. Yeah, so what you have in front of you, this is essentially just the various colors that the zoning map will be. This lighter, the lightest green that you see on there is the open space area. If you flip the page. That shows you. That shows you where those open space portions are intended to be. Now, this is only showing you those open spaces that are master planned. There are a number of open spaces that are going to be required for them to meet the minimum open space requirement. And that minimum open space requirement is ten acres per one thousand population. So. It's about ten acres per three hundred and thirty-three dwelling units essentially, so.
So what's the total on that?
I want to say it's four hundred something acres. It's significant. Do you remember Jeff?
Yeah, I was actually just putting the numbers and it if. Yeah, give or take. For three hundred and fifty to four hundred acres total.
Yep. So the amount that you're looking at here is probably about twenty percent or so of that. The the big squares or the big polygons that you see, those are large regional parks intended to be dedicated to the park district. We did work with the park district with Joe Giorgano and to to talk about these, they're very interested in getting a good park program going. And we spoke with the applicant a little bit about how they're dealing with park operations and maintenance in their vineyard project. And in their vineyard project, they dedicated all the parks that we saw as we drove through, they dedicated that to the city and the city gave them essentially the right to. Install, operate and maintain. The city doesn't do a lot of operations or maintenance of that. The HOA does. What that does is it gives the city the right or the ability to come in, operate and maintain at some point in time. But until that threshold comes, when the city wants to take over the park, the HOA or the developer has the ability to make sure that it is being operated and maintained the way that they want it to be. So I think in our case, it would probably be somewhat similar where the park district, when they are ready, capable. Have the financial means of doing so, the administrative means of doing so, they would then come in and start taking over, taking care of the parks. Otherwise upfront, the developer would do so. And that does a couple of things. It helps save the park district a little bit of money upfront while they're getting their ducks in order. They're not going to immediately see a lot of money coming in from a tax base perspective, just because you're not going to see a lot of development. Well, you're not going to see the substantial, but you'll have the development until, you know, five, 10 years down the road when a lot of infrastructure has been installed first. So with that in mind, that gives the also the developer the opportunity to keep those open spaces and parks maintained the way that they want to, to keep their project marketable. And this is going to be a project that they're going to want to market open space amenities pretty heavily. Parks, recreation trails, there's going to be a lot of trails going through the project as well. So. On the sheet, you could see that we are calling open space where the future potential freeway corridor is going to go. Along that corridor, we don't know if for sure if a freeway is going to go there. We're going to allow the developer to build a road. That road might become a frontage road if a freeway does come in.
You keep calling it a freeway. Let's let's back off freeway. Maybe calling it.
Highway?
Yeah.
Okay. It might be.
I mean, that's still going to freak people out, but when you say freeway, that's a little different than the. Highway or a parkway or a, let's just, let's not go too far, Charlie. You obviously had a full bowl of Grape Nuts this morning.
Well, the reason we're calling it freeway is because that is what you got's.
Really?
Is. That's that's the West Davis corridor. That's the West Weaver corridor.
Yeah.
Now that's what's planned right now. We are going through a.
It was a nice word.
Corridor.
I like Dr. Carlos. Corridor. You like the word corridor.
Yeah, call it a corridor.
Corridor. I don't believe they've done the environmental.
No.
NEPA process.
They haven't.
Clear that decision.
And you guys probably know where we are.
Study on out of six alignments where it goes. Their way. Ways from doing the NEPA out there.
Right. Long term, if the if transportation corridor doesn't go within that that alignment. It might be a great spot for a linear park, be a great spot for the some of the applicants backbone roads. In time, I would imagine that we would see a bridge going over the railroad track to the north and all that. But in the meantime, the applicant has agreed to reserve, it's three hundred feet wide, reserve that space. For potential future transportation. Opportunities.
Are roads typically included in open space?
No, not typically. And one of the reasons why we're looking at this, sorry. It's not, the road corridor is not included in their minimum open space area. The four hundred or so.
Some acres. So you said the map includes about twenty percent. That doesn't include.
It doesn't include this road course. It does, however, include a potential corridor that runs east-west.
Bangor Highway kind of a deal.
Yeah, something that goes out even further west that might eventually, if we play our cards right, connect to eighty-three hundred west. A bridge that goes over the railroad on eighty-three hundred west. But in the meantime, we are calling that open space. It's a lot less likely that that piece is going to turn into a transportation corridor long term. But we want to make sure we keep that opportunity open. The reason why we are still showing, even though it's not counted in there, ten acres per thousand, we're still showing those transportation corridors as open space. It's because we just want to zone them as open space. So the proposal would be that amongst all the other zones that they're getting, we're going to want to zone these polygons for open space. So we know at least, at least have an earmark for where those potential corridors could go. Maybe it's just a grand trail corridor at some point in time. One more corridor and that's along the railroad tracks. We've asked for thirty or sixty feet. I can't remember. Forty forty feet of width along the Union Pacific Railroad alignment. That potential forty feet of width could in the long run hold a transit facility of some sort, dedicated transit. So maybe it's bus rapid transit, maybe it's a light rail. The general plan does talk about having some transit options coming out along this corridor, so.
Is forty feet enough? If it's a. That's a good question. That's a pretty narrow right away.
Yeah. If it's a rail alignment, forty feet would be enough. Plus, we would be able to work with the Union Pacific. We can always go a little wider. We're not intending to build a road in it. It's just intended essentially to be a two lane bus lane.
I just know UTA is always looking at their right aways and saying, boy, I wish we had an extra twenty feet on top of this.
Yeah.
Or we.
We can always bump that number up if we.
Just keep that pace. They double track.
Yeah.
Charlie.
Okay.
Better to now than try to buy it later.
Yeah, and I'll give UTA a, I'll give UTA a call and find out what they think they.
Yeah, I would call them.
We're thinking bus lanes, Charlie, dedicated bus?
Yeah, I mean, unless there's some magical transportation fairy that comes and blesses us with a bunch of money or blesses UTA with a bunch of money to to build. Light rail out in this location. But yeah, I think in the meantime, we'd be talking about bus lanes.
Okay.
Dedicated bus lanes with bike lanes that that essentially run along that as well. So you've got multiple modes of transportation along that corridor, with the exception, it'd be exclusive of car traffic. Okay, much with. Okay. And with that in mind. The the plan shows two potential transit stations. Guide you over to. The other. Handout that I gave you. And. This is what your general point looks like and we're anticipating having potentially two transit stations long, long term. These won't materialize for probably ten, twenty years, but with a little bit of a mixed commercial around that.
So may I interrupt? Chair. Originally, there were three. Wasn't the inner, wasn't the one in the middle going to be something else? You had one on each end and maybe a. Drone type thing in the middle? That's what I remember. One on each end and a drone in the middle. Is that not true anymore?
So I think it was always two stops and what what we were saying is these, these areas that are designated stops. There's a lot of acreage in those. And so if and when, let's be positive thinking and when the drone. Technology gets to a place, there will be ample space at either of those locations and maybe both, right? Because they can serve.
Wouldn't you need a rail stop as long as that is out there? Wouldn't you need one on each end?
Well, we have two, two rail stops is what we.
Right. I know I've seen it. I remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember. I've just been trying. I thought there was a third one. For another possibility of another. Maybe one of those rail stops will have to be enough so that they can transfer two ways.
I think that's the more likely scenario anyway, right? As, as all that technology settles in, I could see them wanting to integrate, right? So.
They have to be integrated because if you had a drone port in between them. What's your next step? How do you get to the, how do you? Get from the train stop to the drone?
I, so there was a conversation. Long that ago about the possibility of a third stop, but from a distance perspective, it didn't really make.
I'm only remembering our conversation, Jeff. That's that's all. So I wouldn't know where to do briefly for that.
As the financial situation increases in terms of opportunity, I think in the beginning, we'll see probably quite a bit of acreage in surface lot. But then in time, as the property gets more and more valuable for mixed commercial, we'll see some of that that surface area being turned into stacked parking with. Some other uses around. And that's, that's why on the the rezone, they're looking for the form base because that gives them a mixture of uses that could be allowed there. Reason why we're talking about transportation in conjunction with the open spaces, just to go over that corridor, the three quarters of talking about that are the transportation corridors. Obviously, we got a hundred feet corridor along the riverway over here with a large regional park on the river, which is this one here. And then you've got another park facility, which is more of a larger neighborhood park facility in the middle. And then that facility there can double as a a neighborhood park and or a. Sewer reclamation facility if they do choose to do their own onsite sewer.
How big is the regional park in acres?
These one, I believe that one is forty something acres. So it's, it's a good sized park. If the park district is looking at everything from arenas to sports fields. A sports complex where you got multiple diamonds and soccer fields and all that in that location. So that's why that looks like that. Any questions about open space for me?
Not for me.
I think so.
I do.
Okay.
So I noticed our friends are here from the DWR or one of those life staff or something. I have interest in protecting another three hundred feet. For upland game birds. On that area. I, I'm going to be very straightforward. When this land was originally purchased, when the, when the state came and bought the property that the existing borders now. That property was, well, in my lifetime, it was. I saw it down as low as a hundred dollars an acre. And that's only since the seventies. This property was purchased back in the, what, twenties?
Thirty-seven.
Thirties, thirties. So that property had to be less than a hundred dollars an acre. I'm I. The question I have is why didn't they buy more then? I don't know that we'll ever be able to do the answer to that question. The other thing is, is I, and I'm with Commissioner Frere on this, I don't want this developer or any other developer along the Great Salt Lake line. As this could, this could. Create. A. Pattern of precedence. Precedence, thank you. This could create a precedence. But I, I'm of the opinion, I would hope that the DWR can make the developer whole by purchasing. That that extra three hundred feet for whatever the rate is and so that the developer isn't damaged. I know that there's some private donations. People have approached me and said some private donations would be in there, but I don't want, I don't think it's right that. I I don't want to do a land grab. I don't want to do a taking. At all. I don't think we'll ever have the chance to get this back again. I know the six hundred foot rule. So all we're doing is buffering that by a half. But I would like to have the, your group. Come up with a way to be able to, how, didn't we say forty acres is what that would be along that whole perimeter?
Eighty something acres if it's three hundreds?
Eighty, if it was the whole six hundred.
If it was six hundred feet.
Forty.
Okay. Yeah. And I'm not saying six hundred feet. But I'm with Commissioner Frere on this. I, I don't want there to be, I don't want the developer, developers, other people along there to be damaged. That's just what the rate is. They had a, they had, they had the rate back in nineteen thirty-seven. They should have bought more of it. But they didn't. And they had a chance to buy it, certainly had a chance to buy it back in the seventies. I had a chance to buy it back in the seventies because you could have bought it for a whistle. I just couldn't pucker up back then, or I wish I would have. But it is what it is today. That's just my thought. I, I am for, I want to be right here on the record in our work session. I'd like to see another three hundred feet along this shoreline be protected. And if a precedence is set that the other property owners coming down further to the south. If if that's called the precedence, that's what that is. That's just, I've made, I said my piece. I've got a little information you might want, you might be interested in. I I'm always interested in a little information. Well, I had the opportunity Friday evening. To visit with Senator Hinkins and President Adams at a little.
Event?
Little event. I happened to be attending in St. George and I brought this up. Senator Hinkins, as you well know, is the chair of the appropriation that oversees DNR natural resources. So I said. Said, Dave, I'll probably be coming to you with a request here. For appropriation to purchase easement. Access, I don't know what it is, but save us a little money, put a little in the corners for us. And President Adams was right there with him and they said, let us know what you want. So I'll be meeting with Hinkins probably in the next thirty days. And then I got to go meet with Scott Chu. He's the House Chair and I know he'll be. So I think we're making progress.
That's good.
How it ends up, it'll prob, more than likely, the purchase will probably be, this is preliminary, probably be an easement rather than fee simple, so. That's. But it is, it, but we're making progress. Two words. So anyway, I just want, I thought you'd be interested in that. Happy day. And oh, by the way. The president said to tell you hi.
Oh, yeah.
That's a great update.
That's.
That's thank you for doing that.
The three of us had on that, so.
Well, this happened to be the right spot at the right time. Well, just so, so again, if I may, Madam Chair. I have been approached by a few private people who did say that they could get some money. And whenever the state's obligating any funds, it's always good if there's a private match. And so. From from my position right here as a commissioner, I'm not going to go do that that legwork. So if this is still of an interest for you all, then start. Eating the dirt. Let's get those private guys collected together so that there is some kind of a match. If or when Dave Hinkins comes with the approach on the state, you can put this together, then you're not damaged and made whole and it all works. Happy day. But other than that, that's not what. You've heard where I'm at. President, I I think we as a commissioner together on that because I'm not, we're not going to do a taking. And and that's just, that's. I think that's a fair, a fair thing and it. And and there may be, you may want to put a little in the kitty because as this develops out there, it's going to keep developing over towards upper. It's going to keep coming. So depends on what you want to say about there. So.
How much time do you want to give the state to purchase the property or an easement on the property?
I don't think we can tell the state how fast to operate, but I think we'll have a good idea. Again, idea is not the same as agreement.
Right.
Just so you're, you're taking notes. I think we'll have a good idea by. End of interim, September, October. Probably actually maybe before then, but I. Commissioner Harvey brings up a great suggestion, which is very valid, which is anytime those appropriations committees look at funding. Firstly, they look at who else is paying? Who else is helping this bill? So I would say rather than later. If you had your donors lined up first, I can go talk to the good senator and say, look, we've got X number of dollars. Whatever that may be committed to it. And that just gives an additional incentive for them to rank your, that appropriation higher than a competing one. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So are you saying September, October, we have an idea of the cost of what that would be? I mean, if we, it'd be nice to have a number that we're going after to get private contributions.
Now, we better have, we're going to have a number before I talk to Hinkins. These guys are going to give me the number.
Yeah. I think the cost is between.
Yeah. They're going to tell me what.
Parties.
What would it be for an easement? What would it be for a fee? Yeah, to me, an easement makes the most sense just because you, you know, you're going to have the same thing. If they go fee simple, you're going to move the property line. Now you got the same three hundred, unless there's some type of an agreement, but.
Is there a, I wonder if there's a way for us to. To 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 march forward with approvals, but but we have something that would memorialize something in the development agreement that allows us all. A little bit more time. And the reason we can do that is we're not going to start pladding. The day after we get our approvals, right? We have a tremendous amount of engineering left to do, a tremendous amount of planning still to do. So I think we would be open to saying in the development agreement, we could memorialize. You know, we get our approvals and then post approvals, maybe it's a twelve month period even that we would allow all of us the time to. Negotiate, try to come to terms and. And the language in that would be similar to the corridor language.
Yeah.
That says. This much of it is eligible to go back to open space if it all falls apart.
You're right, right. We don't come to an agreement that.
Which already protect us.
Yep, but I would suggest the same. The amount of time, that's the question. How much time do you want to give the state to work this out with the developer?
Well, I, again, I agree with them. I think you just put in the development agreement. It could happen sooner. I would give yourself, they're not going to be out there turning dirt.
Right.
That's what you're saying. For a while. So I don't think it's, you know, as long as it's in the development agreement, if it happens six months, nine months, twelve months, we're fine. Yeah. Give yourself a tip. Twelve months means, oh, well, let's, we just need two or three more months. That ain't going to happen. Whatever that ends up being, that's going to be it. We're not, there are no extensions. So we got to rally the private groups and the troops and.
Well, why don't, why don't we motivate all of ourselves and say six months, right? And then that puts us all.
My, my problem is, is I, I would like to say, because we're only in June, I'd like to say twelve. Only to, well, and then if we were, I'd say thirteen, because if it were funded and everything came out okay, the funding doesn't come out till the end of June. If I remember the lesson you taught me. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Could be the first of June, but yeah. Well, well. We'll know. Add around the first of July, twenty twenty-six, that's as long as I think, for sure, the longest would need, because then the funding would be in place. I just don't want to have to go through and rewrite all that stuff again. Yeah, we'll know, we'll know when the final.
Yeah.
Bill, approach bill is written, which will be the last day of the session, which will be what, first week in March or whatever? We'll know then if it's either in the bill or out of the bill. But the funding doesn't, Harvey's right, it doesn't take place till, you know, June. And that's, I don't know about you. Nothing happens until you get the money.
That's very true, yeah. So if that time period lapses, then that open space buffer can go away? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's.
I think so, because otherwise it would impact.
Yeah.
The landowner.
They can't be negatively impacted.
Within that open space buffer, would you guys be okay in twenty, thirty years from now, seeing a road or a highway going inside of that three hundred foot open space buffer? Because if we're moving that and the highway can't go within the buffer, it needs to go north of that buffer, which is more space.
Oh. You're talking about the proposed byway.
Byway.
Got it. I think it would go outside of that easement, the the byway.
The byway, I think.
Otherwise, I don't think there's. I don't think there's a way for a developer to claim that they're impacted if we're planning a road through there. And so if we're, if we're saying you got to buy an easement. Then it's got to be a real easement set aside for that specific purpose. Otherwise, you know what I mean? So, oh yeah, that seems more.
I think the road would be separate.
In my mind, it's up, it's helped to preserve upland game bird, period.
Sure.
That's it.
Understood.
Two separate. And I don't know the law well enough. I know it's a structure, six hundred feet from structure. These stats. What I was told by the fuzz when I was. Not that I've been talked to about it, but I was just saying that.
One last question I have about that. Would you like to see that transaction happen at today's? Land values or at the new rezoned land values?
Well, I think, I think that's. You know, you're, you're asking for us to come up with some proposed numbers and.
Think we're setting the price.
Yeah, we're, that's not us, Charlie.
Not asking you guys to set the price. As soon as you say it's rezoned, the price, the value of the property goes up. So the question is, is should the state be able to buy it at current values?
I don't understand why we're part of that, that negotiation.
I think they'll tell us that.
Yeah, and and just, just for the sake of conversation, I mean.
Yeah.
We, we don't have approvals and so there's no need to.
Right. No, let's not push that right now. They're, they're going to have their appraisers look at it. They're going to look at the value and come up and say, this is what we'll give you for it.
Yeah, and then we'll negotiate.
And then these guys are going to say yay, nay, or whatever.
Yeah.
We're, I, I don't think we get into those details, Charlie. We don't need to. That's not our deal.
No, no.
Yeah, good thing.
So also for the sake of conversation, so like. If you guys, if, you know, we purchased a three hundred foot buffer, we're still taking a three hundred foot buffer, so we're still taking forty acres away. Would there be an option to just purchase a six hundred foot buffer or is three hundred foot buffer as much? As you're willing to possibly sell? Yeah, it gets to this place where we, we run into, and we actually had this conversation at planning commission level where that, that question was, was brought up and, you know, and we, we answered it by saying. Because the planning commissioners were very. Gracious in saying, hey, you know, we won't take any of your density away. And so we get to a place where. Taking that eighty acres away and then trying to cram more density into a smaller area, we reached this place where we, it doesn't. It just doesn't work anymore. So the density, like it was very gracious that they extended that. It was very well thought out. But we kind of get to this place where there's this line. And so this three hundred foot conversation that we're having. But we kind of get to this place where there's this line. And so this three hundred foot conversation that we're having. We would still be able to take our density and move it around. Can we can we stomach that? And we can make that list. But we are, we are. As as any good development gets to to this place where we're at. We are to a place where we're at that line, right? If that makes sense. So three hundred foot. I think we, I think we can make that work and we're we're saying we'll negotiate, you know, in good faith and. With the hope, with true hope that we all get to a place that everybody's happy. That's what we want. But I don't think we do it for that. We just really can't.
There's another thing that um I think we all in this room have to consider is. It's kind of a simple discussion about property rights. If we were a, if we were a user that was asking for a use that required a six hundred foot buffer. And we asked the D N R to accommodate our six hundred foot buffer on a private side. I don't think we would ever get a space at the table for the county or anybody else to intervene. To help us negotiate a six hundred foot buffer or a three hundred foot buffer. I think from a property rights standpoint. We would be on our own to respect the property right boundary, right? And so we're dealing with a public interest that gets a little bit of a special consideration, which we are mindful of. And we are, we are very respectful of that and appreciate all the work that goes into managing our public land. And that's why we're talking about this. But at the end of that, what we do here could set a precedent for somebody who's not as able as we are to accommodate. A a buffer at all. So for instance, if it's Joe Farmer in the future coming. To rezone his property and he wants to go out and rezone his eighty acres and he has to give like six hundred or three hundred feet of his property. That's a much different discussion with less room for error than we ask you. And so there, those two things are still in the back of my mind as we contemplate these issues. I think. We're kind of treading into a public benefit space that creates a gray area on boundary rights and property rights. And what we do with them. And we're more than willing and happy to negotiate with uh the D N R in in the best interest of the public. And uh but we do want to be mindful of that discussion going forward because I think it will kind of create. An expected path forward for other people, neighboring property owners around us, you know what I mean?
And and we'll have to be, we will have to be, all of us collectively, not only in the development. How we memorialize this period of time that we negotiate. We'll have to be very careful in how we craft that language. And then more so, if we do reach the agreement that we're talking about, uh, yeah, we'll definitely have to be very mindful on. How it's, you you know, how it is. Acquired easement, be simple, so that you don't set. This this precedent, because it is, that is a, it is a very delicate issue. It it's an issue that will. Will probably rise, you know, to some some level of scrutiny even at the Almudsmund office, right? They're gonna want to see it and make sure that. That that property rights. That there isn't uh an unduly burdensome uh. You know, precedent set for anybody else. So so we'll have to be careful in how we craft it for the DA. We will subsequently have to be careful in in how we do the transaction. So.
And that's why an easement or a transaction like this is so beneficial because then it is. Two parties that are eyes wide open entering into a willful agreement. You know, there are no coercion or anything like that. It's just, this is the agreement. And that's contract law and it's different from a precedent standpoint, you know, from property rights law. And so uh I like the way we're headed. Uh, I think we can accommodate that. If it was a bigger swath of our property, I would, I would start to feel more pain on it. Uh, Charlie took us through the numbers and we're we're already giving nearly half our property to either open space or roads. And so we're trying to get, we're trying to consolidate a smart development into a smaller area so that the rest of the county can remain rural. And we're we're wanting to do the same thing with D N R, but let's do it the right way and make sure we uh, you know, do it mindfully.
Rich, do you suspect that um? You guys would want to move, if if you did purchase an easement, you would want to move the fences three hundred feet to the north? Or would it be more of a buffer if it's an easement or whatever, it'd be a buffer on the developer's side that. Those landowners, those people who buy into the project could still use as open space?
I don't know that I'm the one to make, to make that decision.
I, yeah, that that's a great question. I, you know, again, that that that's one of the things that as we go through it, we will. We will want to consult with several different entities to to decide to make that decision. That's a great question and. You know, where, where does the buffer technically start? It actually starts on your guys' side, even three hundred foot in. That's where you're, I'm assuming you'll have signs or something that say no shooting. And then. If it's an easement, then that's probably going to say that the fence remains where it's at. And then, you know, we maintain the other side. I will. But we'll, we'll have to do a lot of work.
Probably will have to do something with the the price we pay too, right? Like if you keep it in open space, it's gonna be less than if we move the fence.
Yeah, for sure. And and that's exactly right. And that's why I say we'll 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 consult. As I'm sure you guys will as well, right? To make sure that, you know, all parties. Get to a place that we can accommodate it. And 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 we both agree, it's worth, it's worth. The time and the effort to do that. We're very willing to do.
And I I think as far as where the fence goes, I don't think. Speaking for Jeff, I don't think we have a strong preference either way.
Correct.
It's just whatever works best for everybody, you know.
Gary just mentioned it might be nice to take some of those wetlands that need to be flipped and maybe flip them into this buffer if the buffer is purchased, then you get. Little bit of a wetland buffer for the the game, but maybe not move the fence or whatever.
And and there you go. That is, and that may be.
That can keep the price down.
Yeah, that could. And and then, you know, that would also probably dictate. How the transaction actually happens, easement versus out and out acquisition. So. A lot of work to do, but like I said, worth worth doing the work and worth collaborating on it for sure.
I think as much as as important as anything to me would be, like we've. Discussing other conversations, keeping the people out of the area at every time.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, that's the, well, here's a. I absolutely agree. And that's the one thing to your point that we agreed on early on. And and we shared with everybody at the planning commission meeting, right, that. When we first came to you, we thought, hey, this is gonna be great. And then we heard you guys loud and clear. It. Our duty, the way we're seeing it, is that we protect. Your your side of that fence, meaning we were, we're gonna protect what goes on over there, which was. We need to keep, you know, not only people out, but domesticated house cats, all that. So we heard that loud and clear. So again, I think we gotta take all that into account. And then we'll, we can collectively make the decisions to where where all of this. Fences go, who maintains owns what. And that all of that has to be done, I think, carefully, right? So that we don't then cross this precedent boundary, so.
Charlie, I think we'll um let you continue to facilitate that discussion. We're into the sheriff's time at this point, so I'm gonna end this session, but um. I like where this is going. I think the three of us are on the same page, so.
Would you guys be okay once we get this part settled, having this on an agenda for a decision? Or do you?
I think I would do one more work session so we can wrap up any concerns.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
On any of the items, so.
Just kind of a summary.
A summary. And see what road we take you down next.
Rose, thanks for the time.
Thank you.
Thanks for everybody.
Thanks for having that discussion, Commissioner. You know, just in case you wanted to know, it's still pretty effective. Well, when I'm in the room with the right people, sometimes it helps.
I'd be deal both.
So. I was expecting maybe fifty, sixty people there.
Were you watching?
There was probably two hundred.
Where were you?
Iverson's garage.
Was it, did he do it in the garage?
The garage, yeah. Oh, yeah. So we had tables. Well, you know, he's got cars on his side. Right there. Everybody sat right there just to see. It was good.
Here, this guy.
He just can move over there.
Yeah, I mean, two congressmen. All the senators. Good weekend.
Yeah.
It was quite a deal.
Okay, we are now on agenda item three, discussion regarding sheriff's office agreement with ICE. Sheriff's offices entering into an agreement with ICE for two to three deputies to be assigned as task force officers with ICE. This is not a full or even part-time position, but more collateral and as needed, chief guard, sheriff, Arbon, Liam. Just all good. Surprise, you're not on our agenda. Thanks for coming.
Happy to be here.
Sean Wilkinson. Chief, you're listed first, so.
Yeah, so we've had several kind of conversations, the sheriff and I, with Todd Dewey, who's. One of the ICE agents up here, supervisors. Um, kind of over the last year, year and a half sheriff. About this two eighty seven G program or T F M model. Um, that deals with enforcement, um. There's kind of been. Some positive in relationships with ICE recently. Um, some things that the Utah sheriffs have worked out. Don't want to get into the weeds on that, but we have a pretty good relationship with ICE now. In reviewing this, we had Todd come up, um, and meet with the executive staff, sheriff's office. In reviewing this T F M model or the task force model. Um, it would be more, to give you an example, one of our traffic deputies, Deputy Brian Adams. Comes across frequently, um, people without driver's licenses and things like that who are. Either non documented or here illegally, that typically we don't have enough to arrest them. Or do anything with them. So when I talk about a collateral assignment, it would be. If we run across those things, it's not actively going up and working ICE cases. But it's as we come across these things in patrol. Um, and in in the different areas, it allows us to take action on individuals. Um, that have immigration problems. And deal with them that way if we don't have, if we do have or if we don't have uh criminal things with that. There's no cost and Liam can probably speak to a lot more in the contract. Nothing that the county needs to do. ICE pays for the training that they have to go through. Um, like I said, we're not looking at making a dedicated ICE T F O officer. With this, it would just be a very low key collateral assignment that specific deputies would do um. In working with individuals with immigration problems.
ICE also takes on the liability as well.
Yeah.
When a deputy acts under the authority of ICE, ICE takes responsibility for any lawsuits or any tort issues. That occur because of any arrests or any ICE activity, the federal government um is willing to indemnify the county. So.
That's good.
So of two questions, if there are only specific deputies who are trained, then if there was, say, a traffic stop by another deputy, would they call. Uh, one of these others?
If they're not even available.
But not. Okay, then my second one is, would they be detained in our jail?
That's something that we're working with Chief Lively. Um. The detention part of it is a different aspect of the two eighty seven G program. And there's a couple, couple of different models, but. One of the models that would go with this program is it would be a forty eight hour hold. So there would be, say, a dedication from Chief Lively and the sheriff for ten beds. But those ten beds aren't necessarily resident beds, as they're gonna be occupying for a while. It's gonna be a quick turnaround because they're gonna pick, ICE is gonna pick them up. Um, and process and and take them to a detention facility in Las Vegas, I believe. So it's, yes, there's a housing aspect of it, but it's a quick turnaround housing aspect. Um. In that part of it.
Sure.
Yeah, uh, just uh some clarification. The the arrests, so whoever we bring to the jail, our deputy always verify who it is. And when it's discovered that they're here illegally, we've been doing this before I got here. ICE is contacted and they have up to seventy two hours to come pick them up. That has not changed. This doesn't change that uh with what uh Chief Guard is talking about. The part of where they've asked us for beds, that is, that's if it's, if it goes beyond the seventy two hours. Like we hold them for whatever period of time. And if it is, goes beyond that, then we go into a contracted amount. Which we haven't entered yet.
Is that part of this conversation, though?
I don't think so.
It's, it'll be separate.
Yes.
It it, yeah, it's separate from this.
We can talk about that other thing later, but I just wanted to make sure that if 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 what. Chief Guards describing is changing what we're doing, it doesn't change it now. It's just. Say, we just have someone else on the ground that can make these kinds of arrests. If that makes sense.
Really, the thing is, instead of now waiting for an ICE agent to come down to the jail. And put a hold on them to then come pick them up within seventy two hours, it allows. These specified deputies to enter that immigration hold and then have ICE come within seventy two hours.
Yeah, so.
And you can't do that now?
Uh, we we can't initiate the hold.
Okay.
Now we can.
Okay.
With these two or three.
So before you had to wait for ICE to do the hold?
We'd call them and then they would initiate it. We can initiate, but it doesn't change what's going on in our jail. This other program in the twenty seven G is something completely different. We're not here for that. We can talk about it, but that's not what.
You would only hold them if they, if if they were in there for something else. They happen to be illegal, but they also.
They're on state charges. That's different.
So this would be different in that they don't have to have any other.
In comparison, you look at it with D F A S, our marshals, we have deputies that go out with the marshals and they're. Like the sheriff can uh deputize like the U S Forest Service. We have the U S Forest Service officers that are deputized. So that they can enforce state laws while they're working up in our Upper Valley. It's the exact opposite here. So this allows our deputies to enforce federal immigration laws. On a restricted basis for certain things. Um, in conjunction with ICE.
And we're not out looking for it. This is in the course of our already. Uh, normal duties.
Chris, do you have any?
No, in fact, I uh get a lot of questions just generally about. What's going on with ICE and are we gonna do something with Kiesel and all of that? And so. Uh, Crockett told me that you guys were having meetings and uh I was caught when that you were having a meeting today and I just wanted to come up and listen and start. Bringing myself more up to speed with what we're doing in connection with all things ICE related, because I get a lot of questions. So I don't have any comments. I understand the nature of what we're talking about here. It makes sense to me.
I do.
Yeah.
Something I'd like to say, um, the two eighty seven program that allows ICE to deputize. Basically, the local law enforcement agencies officers, this has existed for a decade plus. So this isn't a new thing, nothing to do with the Trump administration or anything. So, but it is also a hot topic in the media right now, the two eighty seven contracts nationwide. It's just big right now with the ICE conversation. So a standard examiner, anybody picks up on it, runs an article. You guys got to know that this has been around for a long time. And Pete. Counties and states have been doing this with ICE. For a long, long time. So this isn't anything new. It's new here now at this moment in Weber County, but. It's uh, it's been around quite a while.
I add to that.
Yes.
I. Todd Dewey told us that we've had a contract with them for a long time, but those that were involved. They're gone. It's just, it's just just kind of gone away. But it's still there, but it's just not active. Is that a?
That's what I've heard. I can't find, I can't find any existing contract that said we had one with ICE. I don't know, it's probably really old. But uh, yeah, this has been.
Like thirty years.
So there's the training of current deputies and.
And if all, if the two or three left tomorrow, well, we'd be back to where it used to be. We'd, we'd put more names in there.
I assume that the contract would not be uh. Specific to individuals.
No, it's not.
They would have the ability if someone, like if if there were three that were certified or trained or whatever.
Sheriff gets to nominate the individuals that they want to go through the training. ICE has to vet them and make sure that they're appropriate. And then they conduct all the training for the contract. ICE does all the training for them, constitutional law, legal training, the whole bit. Before they'll deputize these guys as a ICE officer.
And then if they leave, they'd just go through that process again. We wouldn't be back here.
No.
Changing the contract.
Right.
It's forty hours of online training. It can be done over a sixty hour period.
Yeah, I remember, but something like that.
Something like that. So they have a little bit of extra time to complete it, but it's not, we don't have to send them anywhere. There's no cost in doing. ICE provides the online portal. And they just do it over, I want to say it's sixty hours, forty hours for sixty anyways, it's in contract.
So with the contract, what's in it for us?
Um.
We're just helping ICE out?
We're, well, we're helping ICE out, but they're also taking all the liability as well. Which is the big thing. Yes, this is why it leaves all concern from the legal's end. Is I said, yeah, we'll take it as long as they're acting in their capacity as ICE, under ICE, then the liability is on us, ICE.
Is there an obligation to detain these individuals? Because my next thought is, what if the jail's full? Uh, are we obligated to find room for them somehow?
Not.
Really seeing other.
Not under the T F M model.
Yeah.
Two other jail models. That deal with that.
That deal with that, but under this one, there's no obligation.
I have sent a letter of intent to work with them on the jail mod- model. But there's been no, let's talk about, let's sit down, let's agree on beds. This is where it gets into a whole lot more with Kiesel in it, uh, our facility. We had uh, Todd Dewey up. He just wants ten beds for right now. He says if every uh jail across the state had ten beds. Right? That would, that would solve a lot of issues. Ten beds is really nothing. So it's, I mean, as much as we flow up and down. Uh, we have an agreement like, uh, as you know, with marshals that if we hit a a threshold. They go out first, not our staff, our.
What I was getting at.
Yeah, so we we and and the chief knows that my policy is we are in no refusal. Um, but the marshals in the state are. If we don't have stadium, anybody outside of what uh our county brings in and the local PDs. Uh, they still come in no matter what. And Chief Lally's also advised, if we do get full, he can get a real loose skeleton crew. And poppy so uh Kiesel open if we have to.
Now, we used to have some uh strange regulations and requirements uh when we were holding federal inmates. This doesn't implicate any of that, does it? They had to have like special haircuts and all kinds of. Seriously.
I can address that if you'd like.
I don't know if y'all have time, I was.
Well, I think I can do it quickly. So we have a contract with Marshall. Since Trump come in, came in, he has said that the ICE can now fall under. The um policies and standards as marshals, so it's a non-issue now.
Good.
But it's a rider onto the charge or the cost that we we assess to. The marshals, which is significantly less than what most other people are getting for just ICE. If we go to just ICE. Contracts, hold it down, the standards go up, but it's not. What it used to be anymore. They've reduced it from um three hundred and something pages, pages down to fourteen. But. I'm not prepared to get into all of that because it's hasn't been requested and it's everyone's just talking.
Okay. Questions, Commissioner Harvey?
It it's it's translucent at best. It's not totally clear, but I think. The big, the hot button for me is transferring liability away from the county and on to the federal. Which is a good thing for, I think, a business model for the county.
Commissioner Ford?
No, I think it makes perfect sense. I mean, just. Allows two or three of your staff to be a little more educated on on the federal issues. We have the liability coverage. I don't see. I don't see this hurts us and probably has some advantages.
To give you a quick example, commissioners of how this is going to help the community. We had an ongoing traffic complaint in Hooper of a guy speeding up and down the road on a bullet bike. Um, that we were unable to catch. Deputy Adams with our traffic unit was able to stop him one day. But could only take traffic enforcement action on him and couldn't impound his motorcycle, motorcycle. So he was back at it the next day. In working with ICE, Deputy Adams found out that he was from Honduras here illegally. He contacted ICE, they went out and then. Couple days later. Were able to arrest him. Turns out the motorcycle was since reported stolen after the first contact. And to my knowledge, we were able to deport that individual. Who was causing a. A lot of concern in Hooper with the way he was driving. And we just didn't have the teeth do anything other than a traffic citation. So just one example of how this. Can be utilized in day to day functions. And then help both parties out.
So under this scenario, you have an internal person to go handle that without waiting for ICE to come out.
Wouldn't have to wait for ICE.
That's the advantage, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it sounds great.
I see it.
As long as it's legal's comfortable with it.
Yes, we are. They've actually revised this agreement earlier this year and the revised version is much better than the prior version, which was really outdated. Um, once you do sign off on the agreement, just so you know. ICE does keep a rolling log of all the jurisdictions who have entered into this agreement with ICE. And it's public on their website, just to avoid all the media requests they get about who's. Partnered with ICE under this contract. So Weber County will go on that list of uh. Entities, just so everybody is clear and it's obvious. But ICE is doing it just on their website now.
I don't know who this question is for, whether it's. You guys. Or Jessica or you, but do we want to be proactive about that if we sign this agreement? And let the public know or just?
I'll tell you what, with our community. They'll love it.
They will.
Overall. But there'll be those few that will. Weaponize it.
You'll let a couple of them.
Mm-hmm. I was still stuck on. He was going up down the street on a fast motorcycle. I thought we had fast motorcycles. I've seen them. We do. But this one's unique. So.
Yeah, I I I mean, I think we're all in agreement to sign the contract. I just am wondering if we can do something proactive.
I share a one minute summation of what we're really dealing with here. So before as Trump came in, uh, ICE told us that there's a. One point five million removal orders across the United States. When talking with our law, that's the 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 federal judge has said these people need to be removed. Whatever reason. And and anybody who crosses the border, uh, according to the offense code, it's a misdemeanor. But if it's repeated, then it then it goes up. But those hundred or one point five million have been uh uh seen by the judge. That was their. This is what we're going to do. It's like our warrants. ICE estimates there's between thirty and eighty thousand of those in Utah. These are criminals. They're not. Citizens that we're removing. They're criminals and that's. Who the feds are are are. Targeting first within that bunch. It's the worst, the worst ones, right? They've got criminal charges or been uh uh avoid murder charges in other countries and they're coming here. That's who they're going after. So with our assistance, we are not going after, we're not checking IDs, we're not looking at skin color and saying, well, let's see what's going on. In the role of our our duties, we come across them and then we check and verify and if it fits that criteria, then we take them.
So they're not being stopped because they're.
Yes.
Fall into a certain thing. They're being stopped because they committed something else, something else. Uh, uh, yeah, they.
And the judge has found them to be moved. So. I'm sharing this with you because in your conversation, you guys are going to get this question.
Mm-hmm.
Why are you going at? No, this is what. The sheriff's office is going after. It's public safety first. They're criminals. Bottom line.
It's all reactive.
Yes.
And Liam could probably answer this more, but I think this. Getting on this work session was more. To make the commission aware of that and the potential. Media and things and questions that can come up. I don't know that it requires a sign off from the commission.
Uh, we're going to have the commission sign off on it.
Are you?
Yeah, absolutely. Because in the event anybody were to sue. Because of this agreement, they're suing the county and not the sheriff's office.
It'll be signed by both?
Yeah, sir, I believe his signature is already on it, but we'll need to add a signature block.
Okay, I think we're all good with it, um.
Uh, it's on your agenda.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow on a consent time.
Yeah. Points about no liability, that's important. And then my point about not turning any of. Not releasing any of our inmates to make room.
Absolutely.
It doesn't sound like that's an issue.
No. And remember, this has been going on already for years with our relationship with ICE. This just allows us to train some.
So if we do want to message it, then we just want to talk about new training or?
Yeah, if if you decide to go out with this.
Yeah, I don't know if that's the right thing or not.
No, if, let's all both agencies get together and make sure we get it right and include Liam and Chris's team. But yeah, this is, we'll be sensitive.
Okay. Good. Anything else?
No, I think we're good.
No, thank you.
Anything else?
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do you have questions about Kiesel?
Well, we're on to the next uh.
Good, because I'm getting lots of calls from all the people that are probably trying to get from us, so.
Sorry, we have the next three hours.
I don't have to talk about it, I'm fine.
Just be ready for the ten thousand people that didn't show up, so.
Yeah, I heard. You're welcome, whatever.
Thanks, you guys.
Thanks.
Thanks Liam.
One?
No, thanks.
Thank you, don't mind if I do.
Jim, you are on one today.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We're on our next item, discussion regarding transfer station budget request. Shaun Wilkinson, John Watson, is Bill coming?
Bill is out of town.
Oh, okay. And Scott Park?
All right. Thank you. And I'll let John. And Scott be most of the talking, but commissioners, we are here today. To, and and I talked to. Both of you about this. Commissioner Ford was out at our Tuesday meeting. This is about the new truck that we are asking to purchase for the transfer station to make sure that our operation. With our new C and D pad is efficient. So currently we have four trailers, but we only have three trucks. We'd like to add a new truck to our fleet. So that all of those trailers can be used. But if we're going to add a new truck, we need to add somebody to drive that truck. So. Uh, we are asking for one additional. Driver position. So we've talked to Scott about what that would cost and I think we can make it work. It's not budgeted for this year. These are new requests. So we do have a budget change. But John has one other position that he would like to bring up as well, and he can describe. Why that's necessary. It's an entry level position. Um, but that's, that's the our request today and we wanted to discuss that with you, make sure you're okay with the budget. And then we can. Move on from there. So John.
And then there's also we got Kleinfeld, we need to get aside.
Uh, that's on the agenda for tomorrow.
Oh, is that?
It's on the agenda, so it'll be, it'll be signed.
All right.
Good enough.
Okay, John.
So what we got? We've got three trucks right now and moving that C and D pad to the back. Has basically eliminated lines. Uh, at the transfer station, so. People are just in and out.
Mostly.
Mostly. There's, there's a little bit of a line here and there, but nothing like it used to be. Have you been over there?
Mm-hmm, awesome.
So.
You've done an awesome job.
So it's, it's worked really well.
I was in late this morning, it's a piece of crap.
It was a lot better when they had the burn plant. But anyways, uh. So to really maintain that, especially on Saturdays, to maintain that uh C and D pad, we have to keep two drivers and three trucks moving. Through there and then we can keep everything. Out and over to the landfill and keep it moving. The problem we have when we're running three trucks though during the day and two drivers. Is we don't have time to move the other stuff that we need to. So we've got tires. Which we have a trailer filled with tires now. We've got another one on the ground waiting to go. We've got grass that needs to go. We've got compost that wood chips that need to be taken over the sewer plant and stuff picked up and brought back and we just. To break into those other three trucks, we fall behind on the C and D pad. So we're. Looking to get that truck so we can dedicate one truck to all the outside. Jobs, the tires, the grass, the compost. And so we can do that whenever we need it instead of trying to break down and get one over there. So that's the truck. We've got it um. For the Peterbilt, just down on nineteen hundred. It's a two thousand twenty four truck. It's only got forty eight thousand miles on it, so it's not even broken yet. And we're getting it for about half the price of a new one, so it's about a hundred and thirty. Thousand. So we have that one, um, but we also need a a fourth driver. We have been utilizing one of our people who. Is a entry level position now, but has a CDL. He's been driving a lot for us. He would just, we'd just do an internal, move him straight into that position, allowing us to then fill his position with a. Entry level. Um, the one position that, the other position that would be new is. We just with this, with the C and D pad now, we really. It works best if we have. At least four people down there. So we've got a. Uh, skid or not a skid, but a loader operator. We've got a track operator. We've got another one welcoming people at the gate that can kind of tell them where to go. And then we've got another person who's directing them into parking spaces, but also can run. The skid steer to keep the trash pushed as they drop it off. They push it back a ways to where then the loader can come back and push it over to the the loading area. So really, we need four people, but. What we're having a hard time finding is people that with that down there, we're getting trash that's blowing around, so we have to have somebody. To try to pick up trash and that's been a chore. Cleaning out the alleyway is always a chore. In fact, I spent all day Friday cleaning out the alleyway myself. And then I came into Sean a little heated, so we're hiring somebody. So tell the commissioners, we are hiring somebody, not asking. So that we can have somebody that will just be a yards person. They'll take care of the grass out front, but they'll also keep the garbage in the. The uh alleyway cleaned out. Of trash. I had a couple of the drivers, MBI drivers complaining that, you know, rightfully so that. The trash drops out so fast there as they're loading the trucks. Um, you just need to keep it cleaned out. They were having a hard time walking and getting up the stairs to where they tarp. Their trucks. So anyways. That's kind of what we're looking at. It'd be a new entry level position and a uh driver operator. Uh, to drive the truck and then the truck.
Okay, Scott, you're up.
So the initial request, hundred and thirty five thousand dollars one time for the truck, no issues. Fund balance is sufficient to buy that. We were looking to. Eventually.
Hundred and thirty one.
Well, I rounded it to a hundred and thirty five because I didn't know the exact amount, but. So a hundred and thirty five, so that that's easy. That's no winner. We could easily afford that. The ongoing cost for the driver would be about ninety thousand dollars a year, and this is the first I'm hearing of the 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 entry level position. So I'm imagining it's going to be what eighteen, twenty dollars an hour? I don't know.
Twenty dollars an hour.
So that's going to cost us if they have family insurance, you know, another seventy five or eighty thousand dollars a year. So um, the truck driver. I I went back and looked at the calculations and I think we could afford that if we want to get this other position. We basically, this is an enterprise fund, so we'll go back and we'll calculate the rates and we'll see if we need to raise the rates or not. Um, we do that once a year uh and we make adjustments all the time. So. The fund balance is sufficient to handle it for a year. Wouldn't cause us any issues if we wait until next year to raise, because I think we just just barely.
July first, it will start.
Yeah, so we've, but we've already told everybody where it's going to be, so I wouldn't want to.
So we wouldn't want to raise again for?
I wouldn't want to do it right now because we just told them, hey, it's this and they're planning on that. So. Fund balance would be. Is sufficient to handle this for a full year until we build it into the rate structure next year. So really, it's it's uh your decision. If we really need that, those positions and in that capacity, we can afford it.
Commissioner Harvey?
Why would you bring this to us mid-year? You know, we've, we've been told.
Direct back.
You're just looking at me. Don't, don't look at me.
Don't, don't look at Scott. You, you can.
Why would you bring this to us mid-year? You, you can look at me. You know, we strictly, we've been really good, but Scott's kind of giving us a. Got to follow this plan.
Yep.
And anybody who comes mid-year. I'm just kind of teasing.
It, it's been interesting to see how the new. Uh, set up functions. And.
You're reacting to the.
We're reacting to that, and I think this will. Fill what we needed.
For, for, I'll tell you right now, Madam Sheriff for Black, just being out there on. A lot of just given days, the fact that the wait's gone from. Forty five minutes always. Maybe an hour and fifteen minutes down to next to nothing from a customer service perspective. Uh, I think it's a needed deal.
Commissioner Ford?
Yeah, I don't, I think it's a no brainer. I mean, to look at the wait times dropped, you look at the customer service, I look at it. If you calculate the time that those people don't have to spend in line now.
Yeah.
I think both of those would easily pay an extra. Ten or fifteen or twenty bucks. We're just doing that for our shareholders of Weber County, so. And it's an inter, so let's, you know, let's cut to the chase. It's enterprise fund. We look at, if we're offering better service, which we are, you have to pay for it.
Yep.
And I don't think any of the. You know, members of that enterprise funds. Cities are going to complain about it, but we just do it next year. We just take it out. We've got a good fund balance, so I'm good.
Well, I could easily just go along with this, but it's, it's, you're going to have the approval anyway, but I will say that I would support the driver, but not. The additional yard keeper. I don't, to me, that's coming mid-budget and. I think we should wait, but. Evidently, you've got to. I think we should wait, but evidently you've got two people who support that, so.
Either that or me out there doing it. I'm probably.
And that's, I think maybe that's why.
Jimmy.
That entertainment in my mind is why.
Jimmy.
I thought.
Remember Jimmy?
To me, that's the more remedial position that I think that I think we might, but.
I know one way we could do it, Val. That it would take you three.
But.
No, I'm not, I'm not putting you guys. If we could get garbage, of course. If we could get inmates to work for lease.
Yeah.
We'd, we'd have.
I agree.
I, I.
I agree.
I am one hundred and twenty-five percent for that, but.
We would love that. Does it sound like it's going to happen?
So if we ever do that, then you'd be able to eliminate this position.
Temporary employees are just that.
It's affecting every department.
Everyone.
So um, and, and.
Another seventy-five.
I'm okay because it's an enterprise fund. But I only think it's fair for you guys to know that I wouldn't support that in this position.
Appreciate that.
But the enterprise fund, it's, that's the beauty of it.
Yeah.
Pays for itself, so.
So I had a budget change ready. I will wait um, and edit it. If you will give me, just like the greats, we can just put in the right correct.
Yeah.
Starting salary, we'll get that in the budget change and we'll push it out through it once.
Okay.
The old bring him the guarantee and add another ploy.
Yeah, we hit, we hit Scott with this about thirty seconds.
It's not, but it's not Scott's fault.
Don't blame Scott.
Okay, thanks you guys.
Hey, one piece of information I want to pass right now if I could. So I had another meeting last week with Commissioner Perry from Box Elder.
Yes.
We talked about transfer station possibilities. I brought up kind of, okay, we need to do something in Box Elder. So he was going to talk to his, is it a gal up there?
Yeah, Gina.
So about some possibilities about extending that leasing, some additional ground there. Will you reach out to her?
Yeah.
Lee was going to talk to her and let her know.
Okay.
I just, I think we've got to do something and I've kind of put the potential acquisition of molding's property into that mix somehow. And we don't know how, whether that's sale and leaseback or whatever, but we, we really need to make that happen. I mean, that would be such a huge benefit to both Weber and, and friend Stevenson was there as well and.
Was? Is he awake?
As involved?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I.
Not sharing.
Especially if the counties, if the counties involved can own that and operate it. So you don't have a third party in there. That's the way to go.
Well, molding side, we know, we've talked about before, it's never going to be approved, at least not
Mm hmm.
in the near future. So we need to come up with another option. The option is, I told Lee, tell us where some ground is that you will approve.
Yeah.
And then I'll work through the details as far as how that works.
Great. Hey, we'll reach out to Gina.
Yeah, I, I think I mentioned to you, I did go meet with Gina.
Right.
Yeah.
Lee told me that, but I think after our discussion last week that I kind of said, okay, let's just look at this from a broad standpoint.
Yep.
Tell us where we can, but don't tell us where we can't. Tell us where we can.
Okay.
Go from there.
One, one other thing, if I may. Missus, we met with Republic Services last week. Um, they had some sad news. Mark Sherwood, who has been working with us, who replaced Reese, uh, passed away.
Oh.
So they're, they're. Right. What's that?
Right.
Yes, yeah. Unfortunately, that did sad.
Didn't know that.
Yeah, so Gordon came and, and he was you know, obviously dealing with a lot. We did talk to him about our contract renewal coming up. Um, they gave us some numbers that we'd been asking for, so we're going to schedule something in the next few weeks with Gordon and start talking about that contract renewal as well. So just so you're aware.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
That's it.
Thanks, John. Thank you for staying.
Thanks, guys.
Ladies.
Yes, I thank you.
You know, it's a weird feeling to be there right now. It's almost like a ghost town. You think, but he's coming. I've, a couple of times I've checked on numbers and we're still getting over eleven hundred hits on Saturday. And people coming in.
Feels so different.
And seven, six, seven hundred people during the week a day, but you just.
It doesn't feel the same.
You just don't see anybody, so it's kind of a.
That's good.
Kind of a.
Good job.
Weird feeling. So they've done, they've done well.
That's good customer service.
Right, thank you.
Greg.
Missus, could I ask for thirty seconds of your time for a personal matter before we send in the next group?
Mm hmm.
Is there possibly we could mute the recording?
Uh huh. Okay.
Really?
We are.
Really?
We, we're on the.
I knew I'd get you, Dave.
Five discussing, discussion regarding twelfth street change order. Gary Myers, Sean Wilkinson, Savel Park. Gary.
So before you commissioners, uh, I have a change order I'd like for you to consider. Um, this is up there on our Liberty Bridge. What happened was during, during design, during, during design, they uh, reached out to the water company to identify where the water line was that was in a conflict with the project. Turns out, uh, the records they had weren't maybe as accurate as what they thought they were. So during the process of redoing the abutments for the bridge, we discovered the water line was not where they told us it was. So uh, some work had kind of basically exploratory surgery had to take place a little bit to locate the water line, found it. Um, and then they went ahead and, and did the relocation. They did it by what's called a force account where it covers the contractor's time and materials that it took to actually do the material, do the work, excuse me. The other, the other complexity is when they found it, they discovered that it's actually a ten inch line where the plans called for it to be a six inch line. So what we did is we got a credit back for the six inch line not being looped. And then we paid for the looping of the ten inch. So we got a credit for about fifteen thousand, but the work they did cost about twenty-five thousand. So there's a basically a ten thousand dollar, ten thousand nine hundred forty-three dollar difference that we will need to pay. Now, keep in mind, we are only paying six point seven percent of this particular change order. And this comes, this will come out of our contingency, which we have not spent anywhere near the max out that we've already committed and set aside for the project.
What do you mean, six or seven percent?
Six point seven percent. That's our match on this because it's federal funds.
Oh, gotcha. Gotcha.
Which is, which is a great deal. Anytime there's a change order, we're only paying slightly less than seven percent of the cost of that. So that is that one.
Questions?
Who's water to Wolf Creek or is it?
Liberties.
Liberties.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just said they didn't have very good records, so. So it's act, so it is actually a ten inch and not a six inch.
Correct.
Correct. Yeah.
Questions? Okay.
Uh, one other issue, we have a, another change order coming on twelfth street I wanted to make you aware of. Um, there is an existing gas line that we were aware of. What we were not aware of was a concrete cap over the top of that. So in order to construct the elevation of the road down to the subgrade elevation, it was completely in conflict with that concrete cap. We wouldn't be able to place the road materials and all the different cross-sections to where it needed to do, needed to be. So we had the contractor remove that concrete as well. That, that not knowing the extent of it, it was tough to quantify, and it's a critical timeline issue. So they've gone ahead and done the work as well. The work totals up to, right now it's looking like the same, it was the same process, kind of a force account where we covered the time and the materials and effort that needed to remove it. Uh, thirty-nine thousand five twenty is what that change order is going to amount to. So just giving you a heads up on that one coming our way as well too. So we are back on schedule for that project to be done paving it and have everything wrapped up this fall like we originally anticipated. Uh, we did run into some hiccups with the water line installation just due to the depth that we were installing it out there. It's tricky. When you're dealing with an installation that deep with groundwater that high, it's very challenging to install that. And quite frankly, it's a, it's a safety concern as well too, because trenches are kind of scary that deep in that kind of situation. But being able to work through all that and get ourselves back on schedule and uh, we're moving along, but any questions on that?
Yeah, I want to hear from Scott.
We.
I know you brought him along for a reason.
Yeah, yeah, well, yes. So the first one doesn't cost us anything, right? We don't have to change the budget for four to one hundred dollars. So that's just informational only. This one we funded with Wake Hog and then impact fees.
Yes.
And Prop one. So we would just at the end we'd see, now in, in the grand scheme of things, we have plenty of money in the prop one that we could cover this, so I'm not worried about that. So I don't know what you do in this situation. You run into concrete. We'll just adjust what we spend going forward, but we still have a healthy fund balance.
But Prop one is how we think.
Yeah.
And normally you go into a construction project similar to this one with about a ten percent contingency. We've, this is only the fourth change order we've had on this phase. Um, two of the other previous change orders were for Weber Basins and a hundred percent their cost. So um, we've, we've really worked hard to keep change orders to a minimum on this phase. And really, we have had a change order comes, I've, till this. Until this one.
Yeah.
So, so we've uh, we, we put a lot of effort and energy into the design of this, of this phase. However, knowing there is a concrete cap, I couldn't even tell you when that cap was installed. It, it predates me and uh, to be honest with you, the gas company was not aware of it either. So.
Was a gap on a gas line?
It was.
That's weird.
Well, ironically commissioner, the location of the gas line is in it, it, it snakes around a lot. And in some situations it's not under asphalt. And quite frankly, it's amazing it hasn't been impacted. This is a high pressure gas line out there.
We've just installed it in the last seven, eight years.
But they stopped just short of where, where I'm describing.
Okay.
Install all the way.
This is the old part.
This is the old part.
All right.
Yeah. So uh, yeah, we're getting things done.
You're all coming with the bridge. Coming with the bridge and go out the west twelve.
Go out west.
Boy, oh, another boy.
He's supportive.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. So. And I think I'm on the next one with.
Oh, you are. We got Charlie back and.
Jumping eleven over your race.
Actually.
You got it.
All right.
And I'm bummed. I'm happy, but I'm bummed, yeah.
I'll, I'll be back at three thirty.
Okay.
Again, it's only a twenty-five percent likelihood, right?
I love you.
That's really funny. If they were drawing you out of the hat, sure.
Sure. Yeah. But uh, there's a couple of people that have run before.
Still was, so.
Well.
Merrill Cook ran.
Okay, we are now on agenda item six, discussion regarding Bennett rezone proposal and development agreement. Charlie, you were, Sean Wilkinson, Gary Myers, Jaffe Coleman.
Commissioners, hello again. This is our other big project or bigger project. Um, this is the development of the, the Gibson Farm. Uh, the name of the development so far um, is Bennett Development. Um, and there's a few things that go into the potential creation of this development. So if you, if you recall, um, last December, you guys passed a resolution changing the general plan map, but the general plan map change was contingent on this rezone actually being finalized. So um, we'll see that change if you guys approve this. All right, you got a question, Harvey?
I'll wait until you're.
Okay. Um, the first thing that would need to happen to make this development uh, work for the county is we would need to adopt a new zone. Um, that is a copy of the proposed TN traditional neighborhood zone. Sorry. Thank you.
Did you guys share one down there? You guys share one down there?
Basically, in the traditional neighborhood zone, what this zone does, the zone is essentially an enabling ordinance where it enables the county to uh, allow other kinds, not just this project, but other kinds of master. not just this project, but other kinds of master planned, uh, traditional neighborhood, uh, projects to be proposed and move forward. Um, the, the basis of this zone is essentially, um, it, it's a form based, um, oriented zone. Uh, needs, uh, requires design standards and all that kind of stuff, but the, um, the thing that implements the zone is a development agreement. So before granting anyone this zone, we would want to negotiate a development agreement with whoever the developer is. In this case, it's, um, it's Black Pine. Um, and in that development agreement, we would talk about densities, uh, unique types of uses. There is a use table in the zone, but unique types of uses beyond that. Um, and other kinds of, uh, development patterns, layouts, street connections, all that kind of stuff. So essentially this is a zone that's unlike our other zones. It's kind of a write your own zone uh, that a developer can propose and you guys could approve, uh, approve if you wanted to. Um, with the creation of the TN zone, if this project gets approved for rezoning, we would ask that you uh, rezone the project to TN-Bennett. So it is their own unique zone. If you would look at the zoning map, it would say, uh, Traditional Neighborhood Bennett. If another project came in somewhere else, minimum of 400 acres, if another project came in somewhere else that also wanted to use the TN zone at 400 acres, um, then they would be able to ask, you guys aren't obligated to give it to them, and we would go through the same negotiation process with them. The general plan does talk about the importance and the benefit of master planned projects. Um, you just take a longer view of, of from here to 30 to 50 years down the road, um, just like we did with the project we were just talking about, uh, to try and anticipate reasonably anticipate the needs of the project and the needs of the community related to the project. And that's why master planning is really important and the, the general plan would agree with that. Um, the applicant's proposal, this was the initial application. This is for the visually impaired because I couldn't figure out how to make the printer work in my favor. I only wanted one document to be printed this, this size, not, not all of them. They all started coming out this size. Um, so that's the applicant's ask. That's the initial ask. There's been some supplemental information that's been, uh, submitted since then, but you can get a sense of, um, what it is that they're looking to do. And I know that, uh, those two of you have gone to, uh, Norton Thomas, which is the project that they're kind of based on this project off of. Um, and so we're trying to find the ways to help the applicant get the kind of product and the kind of project that they want to do, uh, while also providing a benefit, overall benefit to the community. Um, we know that taking a, a big farm, a big historic farm that's been in the area for a while, turning into development, that's, I think, I would say probably the majority of the community doesn't like doing that, but we do know from the general plan, from the planning commission, and from those who participated in that, if property owners want to do it, then let's do it the right way at the very least. Um, so that's the, uh, essentially the framework for all this. Wanted to give you guys another document. This is, um, the concept maps. Then I'll walk you through what each of these are. There are plenty of these.
Oh, goodness.
Have your own. That's the one, one for everyone. Good to go. Okay. Um, so these come straight out of the proposed development agreement, um, which I, I don't have in front of you guys, but I wanted to talk, uh, talk to you about it and, and run you through it. So in the TN zone, and something that is pretty common in form based zoning, is you get transects. Your transect zones dictate kind of the, the intensity of uses in those transects. On one side, the T1, that's natural open space. On the other side, um, the, the T6 in some places, that's like a high density urban core. Uh, these guys are proposing Ts, T2 through 5, T5 would be, um, a small village neighborhood. T4 would be, you've got a lot more residential in your, um, areas, uh, a little higher density residential, and then T3 and T2 would be your single family essentially. Uh, but there is still some ability for, uh, flexibility in each of those transect zones as well. Um, and then they've got two special districts being proposed. Special District 2 is intended to be agritourism operation. Um, you might continue to see the, the green, what is it? The fall, what is the agritourism? Green acres. You might continue to see the green acres, um, agritourism operation out there, continue on. Um, and then the other, uh, special district is up against 12th Street. And essentially that's a kind of bigger grocery store types of uses, yet commercial vehicle oriented. Um, the intent of these transect zones is not necessar- not necessarily to say in this zone, single family is here. In this zone, two family, in this zone, multifamily. Uh, it is intended to be mixed, but the gradation of intensity increases as you go, uh, into the, from lighter to darker. So the TN zone would set up those transects. If you zone the property to the TN Bennett zone, this would be the transect map that would govern. Okay. If you flip the page, next page is the, uh, backbone transportation. So our general plan talks about 5,500, uh, west, 5,100 west, 900 south, 4,700 west, and 400 south, as well as 700 north, as being regional connector, uh, streets. Uh, everything but 900 is, is designated as a collector street, 80 foot wide right of way. Um, you could still have a two lane collector street. I think a lot of them, most of them will probably still be two lane with shoulders, maybe even with on-street parking. Um, 700 north, that's the one at the top here. That one is intended to cross the river. We talked about a project, um, in your commission meeting, uh, last week, and you'll talk about it again tomorrow, but, uh, further to the west or east of here that is proposing to install the, the eastern side of 700 north. These guys would install essentially the western side before it hits the river. But long term, the intention is to have a road go from Pioneer Road that connects to, um, 400 north interstate or interchange all the way out to Little Mountain. That's the intention for 700. Same thing with 400. 400 is intended to connect to 1900 west on the far, um, eastern side, go all the way out to Little Mountain. Now they're proposing 400, which is this guy here, come to here, and then they would jump up and cross the river over here. You could see on the other side of the river, they've got the, uh, Black Pine, uh, M&amp;T development project that was approved a couple of years back. So that, that'll be the northern access essentially to that project and then, um, it'll continue westward. Where the river is configured, um, we don't see 5,500 west or 5,100 west going north. Um, it'd be a lot of river crossings there. And so they essentially TN or stud them to that 400. So that's their backbone. In between the backbone, that's the next page, is their local streets. Uh, this is the conceptual layout. Some project maintenance not look exactly like this, but it is uh, a, a good illustration of what we can anticipate. You've got a really strong street network, good street connectivity, good trail connectivity. Um, the, uh, you could see from the juices, we've got, uh, typical lots, large multifamily, commercial, uh, farmland, school and civic structures. Um, are, uh, what are essentially being posed in here.
I don't see any civic structures.
Yeah, I don't either.
It's very small in the northwest.
Oh, there's a, there's a dot right there.
Oh. Can you see that? In the north.
Oh, and there's one in the center.
One over here.
Of town over here. So, sorry. I could have gone bigger on these ones, I guess.
Okay.
So your civic structures, your schools or your town hall or, uh, your rec centers, um, things that are, um, civic minded. This type of product, this type of project, um, both the TN zone and the master plan concept that they presented to us, um, it has two primary components. One is the public realm, the public side of the project. The other is the private realm or the private side of the project. Um, their architect kind of explained it like this. He said, uh, do what you're told out front. That's the public realm. Do what you want out back. That's the private realm. Um, and I would go even further and for the most part, do what you want on the inside. Um, now, the way that they want to govern the land uses, um, transect zoning and form based zoning is very heavy on how everything looks. It's not as heavy of de-emphasizes the uses. Uh, it doesn't mean you can't regulate uses and we are suggesting that we do regulate uses in the TN zone. Um, however, as far as how those uses are, um, disseminated out through the project or divvied out through the project, that would be up to the town architect. They're proposing to have a town architect that's essentially the, um, designer for the project. In your development agreement, that designer would be accountable to you. Uh, but it would be paid for by the applicant. So it'd be the applicant's, um, architect. But if we start seeing that that architect is stepping out of line, not following the design code, not following the development agreement, that's where you guys would come in and there's in the development agreement, we've got disciplinary action that can happen, um, as well as, um, termination. And you guys have sole authority to terminate the architect if you want to. Basically, the way that the development agreement is written, um, the applicant has the ability to nominate the architect. You guys have the ability to review and approve whoever that architect is. You have the ability to remove the architect. The applicant has the ability to ask you to remove the architect. So, um, there wasn't a very clear way, given Utah land use authority laws, wasn't a clear way to set this up in a way where we, we weren't forgive the statement, but, uh, letting the fox watch the house. Uh, so we wanted to make sure that we had you guys paying attention to how this was going out. What that, what that means is that that architect in being paid for by the developer will work with the developer to design the project. They'll have real estate contracts, somebody who buys a piece of property. Um, at the time that they buy the piece of property, they'll come in and they'll say, we want to do town homes. We want to do single family. We want to do whatever the use is on that particular piece of property. It'll go through the town architect. Town architect will say, that actually works really well, given our concept plan. Let's go ahead and approve it, but we're going to prove it with the condition or with the contract, with the, uh, a real estate contract that says you can only do it this way. And then they go, they do it that way. They, um, submit land use permits and building permits through the county. We would look for that town architect's sign off, basically. When the town architect signs off on whatever that is, that is the master developer and the town architect essentially saying that use alongs right there. That would actually take the county out of, um, that role, uh, essentially saving us, I think, a little bit of administrative costs, given the technical, technicalities and the complexities of the project. I don't think overall we're saving anything, but I do think that we're not costing anymore. That's the other big part of the development agreement. Aside from phases, aside from open space, is how do we make sure a unique project like this is unique, it's innovative, it's outside the box, doesn't end up costing us in ways that we can't anticipate right now. We've got a couple of clauses in the development agreement that say, um, if this increases the level of service need for this project, the, the HOA or the master developer will pay the difference or cooperate with the legislative authority to adjust special assessment taxes or whatever it is that's needed to make sure that the project can be what it is. They've got unique street cross sections. And one of the concerns of, uh, engineering and one of the concerns of our, our roads department was if they're unique, they might need special, um, attention and special consideration, special equipment. And if we don't have that, someone's going to need to pay for it. So the development agreement, um, puts that cost on the master developer.
What do you mean that they're unique?
So the road cross sections, I don't have them figured out for you here. Um, I expected we'd probably do a couple of work sessions. And so we could talk about transportation another time, but their cross sections don't look the same as what the county cross sections are. In fact, you can kind of see a little bit on the map. I mean, for example, this, this road in here, you've got a road that is buffered with a lot of open space, space on both sides. It's probably split lane with open space to the middle, open space on the outsides. We just don't have roads that are like that. Our roads are very cut and dry. They're this wide. This is how wide the, the, the paver is. This is how wide the road is. Uh, this is how much we need to get transportation through in a safe manner. They're looking at this from not just a safety perspective, they're looking at this from an aesthetic perspective. And so if it costs the county more, uh, by, by taking on those roads, if it costs the county more, the expect, expectation is that the people who are moving into the project and or the developer will, um, compensate for that adjustment, for that difference. Okay? As far as open space goes, they're proposing that a minimum 100 foot buffer along the river. They're also proposing to, um, do a little deeper into the science of riparian area just to make sure that they've got that the 100 feet is, is enough. If it's not enough, if their scientists say it's not enough, then they'll make adjustments based off of the recommendation of what they're, what the science shows. So. And that's the thing. Were you guys well enough?
Comments?
Well, you've come a long way on that.
We have, in a short amount of time.
My question better goes to Andrew. So has this been heard? That's fine decision? As far as this last, I mean, I know it's been heard before, but and my understanding, didn't have a lot of public attend the last public hearing.
No, no, it's my understanding is, uh, when, when these guys went out to the public on their own to have, um, uh, open houses, there were some hot meetings. But.
When was that?
We had a couple, um, beginning of this year. I don't remember exactly.
Yeah, it was mid-January. We had one the end of last year and then mid-January before we came in.
I went to the first one and the first one wasn't very hot. It was just a lot of questions, uh, from landowners trying to figure out what to expect. And they had questions both for the, um, applicant and for the county. And so it was good that we were all there discussing, but it, that one wasn't heavily attended. I think we probably had less than 30 people, uh, there. Um, second one, I understand was a little bit hotter. I wasn't at that one. Um, we've been told by various people in the community that, um, that there's going to be a big uproar and a big outcry on this project. When it went to a public hearing with a planning commission, what we get? Two or three? Commenters?
Yeah.
And that they weren't even necessarily commenters against, they were just people expressing concern. If you're going to do it this way, then maybe X, Y, and Z needs to happen. One of the, um, one of the speakers expressed a little bit of frustration that they felt like traditional neighborhoods where it's a little bit more grid pattern, straight streets. Um, this is a grid pattern project, but it, it does have curvilinear streets. There's pros and cons to curvilinear streets. Curvilinear streets create a lot of traffic calming. Um, also tend to, they can create a little bit of confusion if you, you're oriented a different direction than you thought you were because you, you went around a bend, but because there are so many intersections that are being proposed, it's going to be easy to navigate through the project. You'll, you won't get to a spot where there is no way to get out. You'll always find an intersection to take you to an exterior boundary road.
Yeah, so public roads then?
Yes.
And we have a provision in there that if all of a sudden the cost of those roads go up, that somebody else has to pay for it.
Yep.
So what are we doing out on 12th Street, 1150?
So, um, unless, so most of that is, was improved in the past. We do have uh, long range aspirations for that, uh, road to be even wider than it is. Um, I shouldn't say aspirations, plans related to development that is probably going to happen. So it'll probably need to be expanded at some point in time. We're asking them for right, uh, right of way dedication, but I don't think we'll ask them for street improvements. It's just such a small, uh, piece right there along 1200 that it, it just doesn't seem like it'd be prudent to ask for big improvements though.
But we will have right of way.
We will get the right of way.
So that's, that's my main concern. We have, yeah, I mean, can't expect them to take it all the way to 47, but we need to have that section because what is this? 15, 20 year, 25 year project? So I mean, sooner or later, you're going to have to widen it. We know that's fact.
Yep.
Um, so.
Both 4,700 and 12th Street, we're asking for 132 foot wide right of way. What do we have right now at 12th?
100.
100. So we're asking for 32 more feet in, in a width for the long one. Uh, 132 feet of, of right of way, um, UDOT can fit if they need to, not to say they should, but if they need to, they could fit seven lanes in there with curvilinear side.
So one last question up my mind. I'm assuming you got your water and sewer issue figured out.
Yep.
You going to Central Weber?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
You didn't have to pump or you got gravity?
Uh, right now with the design, the first couple of phases will be gravity, most likely, and then the rest will have to be pumped.
Pumped, okay. And your water?
Yeah, Taylor West Weber.
Okay, and then everything's good there?
Yeah. Yeah, we've had multiple conversations with them. We're upsizing some lines for them, but.
Well, I don't want to.
Start service. For services.
Yeah, I don't want to ask questions. I know we're asked by the planning commission. I'm assuming you're asked and so.
Yeah.
Uh, so no other questions. I, you know, I know the planning commission has spent a lot of time on that. And if they're in favor, I'm just for the planning commission.
The send out here is the, uh, staff report that went to the planning commission. That's what the planning commission recommended. Um, and we'll get you in one of our next meetings, the, uh, development agreement. But the planning commission recommended approval, uh, of the project, um, based on the development agreement that they saw. With one additional caveat, they wanted to see two pedestrian bridges across the river. Um, one would probably be down closer to, um, getting, uh, them over to the industrial area. And then one will probably be further to the north. They wanted, uh, pedestrian specific bridges. Uh, seven hundred, four hundred and, uh, uh, twelfth street long run will also have pedestrian facilities, but they wanted unique ones. And so we worked with the applicant a little bit on that and, um, we'll probably give some kind of like an impact fee credit, trail impact fee credit for the installation of those bridges. Um, they do have some partnership with the, um, owner, the owners over in, or some affiliation, I should say, ownership affiliation, uh, where the other Black Pine project is. Uh, so that one would probably be expected a little sooner than later. Uh, but the one to the north, that can't come until we've got landowners on the west side of the river, um, ready and well. Uh, so that'll be fun to do down the road. We do have some phasing, um, of the project that are, that are being proposed primarily in terms of open space and the river corridor. So the river corridor is intended as each subdivision, no matter where the subdivision is in the project, as each subdivision is being, um, proposed, fifty percent of the required open space, which is ten acres per thousand people. So fifty percent of the required open space would go towards the river corridor. The other fifty percent could be wherever the developer wants it within the project or outside of the project. That's until the river corridor is owned essentially in fee by the county or the, or the park district. Once the, uh, the river corridor is owned in fee by the park district or the county, at that point, when a development is within two hundred feet of the river corridor, the improvements of that river corridor will be required. So as they kind of, uh, develop up to the north, they, I'm assuming they'd start the south side, but as, as they develop along that river, we'll get more and more improvements, um, going along it. So they're planning on doing the, the trail corridor like you've seen on other projects.
Well, but the, uh, the dedication of property in phases, it, the county will have the ownership of that property, right? And that was important to the planning commission to make sure that that happened as it, as it was phased in.
Our district, um, they, I mean, you guys know they wanted, uh, a wider width than a hundred feet, but, um, uh, they're willing to accept what's, uh, being proposed here. Um, Jeff, did I understand that this green piece was potentially a park piece?
Yeah.
So the, the Oxbow in here, I know this is one that, that Lance and, um, uh, but some of the other park district people, they were, they're pretty eager to get this Oxbow piece as a community park area, which I think would be kind of hard to develop. Uh, so you can see the green space, uh, the dark green being that hundred-foot corridor essentially. Um, and then the lighter green being, uh, just other open space that'll be in the project. We're suggesting that, um, the entire project go into the TN zone. We were originally thinking maybe some of it should go in the open space zone, but the TN zone has that T-one natural open space, um, uh, uh, designation and so that, that'll be taken care of through the TN zone. And so my question.
Sorry.
Um, my question for you guys for the last, uh, five minutes is how many work sessions would you like with this one? Not quite as big and a lot more connected than other pro, the other project we're working on. So I don't know if there's as big of questions, um, how infrastructure is going to happen. Uh, do you guys want to address this a couple more times or would you rather go straight to a hearing? How would you?
I really think it goes straight to a hearing. Commissioner Harvey?
Back last year, we talked about no spot zoning. And you were going to open up the master plan again along twelfth street.
Mm-hmm.
How did that go?
So we, we did the plan for this area, uh, last year in December. So this whole quadrant was redone, uh, this last December. As far as.
It's open to the public and people had a chance to come and.
Yep.
Okay.
It was, it was a fairly slick deal. There really was not a lot of opposition. There was some, uh, a little more than when they went to the planning commission for the rezone. Um, but not as much as I thought there would be. A lot of the landowners were saying, if we have to see development go there, this is probably the best kind of development to go there, but we really don't want to see it there. Um, but there were, I was actually pretty, pretty impressed that there were a few landowners who were there saying, I don't want to see this development happen, but it's not my property. And so they were, they were willing to accept, uh, it is what it is. So I don't know that you're going to find a ton of people who are really eager, who live right here, right next door to see the development happen. Um, but one person said, if we're going to get the parks and trails out of this, okay, I'll deal with it.
Next question.
Thanks.
I'd like to see some kind of plan. We were talking about, uh, dealing with forty-seven hundred west and a flyover for the rail line.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if that's in this and I'm sure the planning commission's probably dealt with it. That's just a, a comment that I'd want to see here. Next thing, back at, back on site, when you put your feet on the ground back there, there was a nice buffer, uh, two hundred feet, three hundred feet from those main roads coming in. Uh, like a little park, a little pocket park type thing. I don't see that in the conceptual plans. And one of the things I liked on that was that. So that's one of the things. And again, having the advantage, I, I had also would hope that the, all the planning, before we got to here, I'd hope that the, all the planning commission would have had a chance to go put their feet on the ground out in Kentucky. Uh, that would have been a really, really, uh, great thing. At least it, it helped me for visualizing. So I'm coming up with things I don't know that they had privy to, but creating the opportunity, uh, that was a big thing. The buffer at the entrances, uh, was another big thing. And then, uh,
I just make a comment to that challenging.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um.
That's up to, it's up to our chair.
Sorry, Chair. Um, so where the buffers, um, like in Kentucky, where it made sense is when you were next to, it was a busy road next to a residential area.
Forty-seven hundred's busy, twelfth street's busy.
And so, and so where there's areas that are going to be commercial in nature, we probably want that to feel a little, a little closer to forty-seven hundred where there's residential. It makes, for us, it makes a lot of sense to have buffers because if we're trying to sell homes and people don't want to be right on those busy roads. So in terms of the design code of this, the town, Mike Watkins.
It was amazing that Mike didn't put those buffers in. Having met him, talked with him, I was, I'm actually a little amazed that they don't have those buffers in.
Yeah, so, so there will definitely be buffers. Uh, but, uh, what I'm saying is when we get to the, to the actual phase that is off forty-seven hundred, we care deeply. We, I mean, we don't want homes right on forty-seven. We want a buffer off of forty-seven hundred.
I want that in the writing.
So there's actually something in the proposed development agreement that talks about development that is on the periphery of the project. Um, to something a little bit to that effect. It's not necessarily, uh, an open space buffer. Um, but I do think the other side of this is there, we're still expecting ten acres per thousand out of this project as well. And what you're looking at here is not all the open space that you're going to get. In fact, if you look at the open space here and then you compare it to what they're showing on the concept plan.
Buffer. To fit the entrance, those big entrances buffer.
Yeah.
So you show me what you want buffer. I want to see buffer. Next, the last thing. Has there been on this west side, and I'm going to just say generally, the east, the east side of this river, were there breaches? Were there, were there bri- breaches, any of those? And if so, and I'm talking, Andrew, you might know this, were there breaches on that river back eight, nine years ago when we had several of them? Before the canal went in?
Not so much on the east side. It does, but it subs over there.
Yeah.
Water will be on the surface, even though the water doesn't flow out of the river to get there. It subs through the ground and comes up because of the depth of the river and how much, you know, how much water it's putting into the ground.
I just was concerned because what I'd hate to do is inherit a problem, no matter how great this is, I don't want to inherit a problem. Most of the, and most of the stuff I see is on an outside turn of the river. You know, when the river comes and has to bank and go around those outside turns. And so I have some concern about a hundred feet on outside turns as the river goes through here. All the way from forty-seven hundred up to the north until you leave the development going out there, any outside turn, it's concerning to me. All just because of, of, of the same thing you just talked about, the pressure of the water pumping up somewhere else because of that. Does that make sense? And I don't want the county, I don't want my grandkids to ever have to inherit a problem because we didn't do our due diligence and now's the time to do it.
We've got two potential solutions for you in the development agreement that we'll go over. One of them is that, um, if Gary determines that whatever their, their surface water or groundwater, whatever their plan is, is an, in, causes inordinate demand on the county, then either he has the right to not approve it or he has the right to require like an HOA to take care of it. If, if, uh, if it's something.
I want the second. As great as Gary is, uh, you know, but I don't, I want to take the human error out of it. I want it on the second. The HOA to have to take care of it, not the greater Weaver County to have to, eh, eh, those would be my suggestions. I'm very happy that you've got the, those, some of those questions answered. A lot like, uh, Commissioner Forrest, a lot of work here, a lot of work and it's, uh, this is big, huge, big.
The other answer to that question is, um, they are required before they do, um, any development within three hundred feet of the river, not a hundred feet. Within three hundred feet, they have committed to, uh, having that science done so they know what the actual, uh, long-term plan should be. And if, right now they've got Bone and Collins, uh, doing the work. If Bone and Collins says you need to be five hundred feet here, uh, to avoid risk, they'll have to be that, that'll be.
It basically eliminates all duck hunting on the, from here on out of this word.
Along the Weaver River.
Yep, through that area.
Yep.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I have a couple of more things that you can jot down that will be for our next work session. Um, one is legacy, considering we don't know where that will be coming through. And there, what did you say? Five or six different options still?
Six right now.
So I'd like to see how that would affect this.
Okay.
If there were an option to the east, I think if it was far enough to the east, it would affect this. Um, I would really like to see the, when you talked about this quadrant that was redone on the general plan, I'd like to see that on a bigger scale so I can orient myself and see if that, I, I don't think that this zone was part of that new general plan.
You mean the TN zone?
The TN zone.
Um, not necessarily. Uh, if you look at the, uh, planning commission handout, sorry, Christian Harvey, I'm going to ball yours. Um.
That's my most important dossier. Be careful with that.
So I'll, I'll get you a bigger, uh, version of this, but, uh, on page.
Yeah, I get these big ones here and then I get this.
On page, uh, uh, six of one thirty-five, there is that, um, that inlay right there that shows how the general plan is laid out. Something's a little bit different, Commissioner Beaufolos, from our general plan than you might be used to because I know how, how West Haven did it. West Haven said, these are what those zones should be. Um, what a lot of different general plans do is they don't say these should be the zones. It, they say, this is what should be there. Go figure out how to do it. And if that means new zones, if that means new innovation, um, that's how we would do it.
Thanks for educating me on that.
Yeah, no problem.
I know, I'm, I'm a tough sell because of that, my history. Um.
No, I, West Haven doesn't do it wrong. They just.
Yeah, it's different.
Their own way to do it.
It's different. Um, and I would like to see if the planning commission has discussed that in any other areas. Um.
That, this kind of zone?
Yes. As Commissioner Harvey brought up, spot zoning, which is kind of seems like a, a funky term when you're talking about so much ground. Cause a spot is pictured being like ten acres. But spot zoning, part of the definition for me is zoning it or at the developer's request.
Yeah, okay.
That's what I hate to see. It just looks like, uh, preferential treatment and I would rather see a big picture of, and, and, and don't get me wrong. I haven't been to Kentucky, Kentucky.
Kentucky.
But I fully understand what's happening there. I've seen it online. I know, I know, I know what's happening. I love this. I just want it, I want to be able to tell the public, we feel like it belongs here, but also me here and here and here. Like, that's just an easier sell than.
Yeah.
Hey, somebody asked us for this, so we're going to go ahead and do that.
So I think what we'll do is we'll, if you're okay with it, we'll have a work session about how the general plan and this tie together. Um, so you could see how it's not spot zoning and, and what we did to go beyond just the.
That would be great. And then another question that I'd like you to answer is, um, before the general plan changed, what was the density allowed and, and how does that compare to the density that we're looking at now?
Great. One blowing it for forty thousand square feet is how that is. So I'll get you some numbers. I'll give you a table.
Yeah, yeah.
This is a, one acre zoning right now.
Okay. Those are my questions for next time.
And, and let's be clear on this. The reason it's one acre for forty-eight, one for forty thousand square feet is because when the general plan was, stay with me here, when the general plan was first put on there, it kind of just, former commissioner just kind of says, we don't want to worry, we don't want to ruffle any feather feathers on, feathers on this right now. We're just going to kind of leave that. We just kind of didn't even address it, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it was addressed, but it was left as ag.
Ha, go ahead. I'd love it.
We could spend a lot of time on that. We don't.
We don't need to.
But it was left as, as ag because this was a, you know, seven generation farm. And that whole area was pretty much dictated by the ownership of that particular farm. Nobody saw this coming.
But how long ago was that?
Five years, four years.
Yeah, just when, when the general plan was adopted.
Yeah, general plan was adopted, right.
Yeah, three years ago, I think we, the general plan in twenty-two, three, yeah, three years.
Oh, wow.
So that's how much things changed and how quickly, yeah, it's changed fast.
I just want it, I don't want the perception to be, we ignored it or purposely did it this way to per, so that would all be one in, one, uh, one home per acre out there. This, we did three years ago this way because that's.
Because you didn't want.
Favor buckets is what I'm talking about. And so.
Okay.
Cool.
You have a lot of notes.
I do have a lot of notes. Thank you guys.
We'll be seeing you soon.
I'll, uh, I'll work up a little, uh, work session plan for you guys and, and probably see you next week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie, thanks you guys.
Thank you.
You didn't know her, Mike? Mike, Charlie, you haven't given us.
Okay, item eight, discussion regarding confidentiality and non-disclosure agreement. Uh, Ashlyn, are you taking this for Stephanie?
Sure.
Okay.
So we had a company reach out that's looking to expand out in far west, I believe it was for Pleasant, Pleasant View.
Are they local now?
Uh-huh, yeah, but the company wanted an NDA signed before discussing anything. And so Lauren's gone and made one.
It's very similar to the one we did with uh Weaver State recently. Um, so there's a very solid provision in there that talks about grandma and how that, uh, it actually says this supersedes all other parts of the agreement. Just to make sure that they know that even though we're signing this, grandma will still prevail always.
Yeah.
So.
So. Good. Are they okay with that?
Mm-hmm. Yes, I did talk, I did call and talk to them about it.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So this will be an, an agenda item tomorrow, taken, signed off, and then we have a meeting with them later this week. Questions?
Yeah, so have they requested the NDA?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, they, I'm sorry, go ahead.
This is a real company?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I think, I think I know which one we're talking about, but I'm not sure. Yeah, so I mean, we, we know what the, we just need to relate to them, what our NDA policy is, which we're glad to sign it, but there's no guarantees because of grandma, so.
Exactly.
Yeah, as long as that's in the con.
Yeah.
Chris Crockett and I've been through that over the last forty years.
Too, just to make sure that we covered all our bases.
So.
So. Yeah.
For Charlie?
I don't see a problem.
Perfect.
I noticed I skipped to number eight. You guys are also here for number seven.
Yep.
I did not do that on purpose.
It's okay.
So item seven, discussion regarding the summit interlocal. Sounds like, sounds like that's why I'm here. Sorry, Sean.
Yeah, it's okay.
I'm flustered.
Yeah. Rightfully so. Commissioners, you're aware that we have a current interlocal agreement with Cache County for Powder Mountain, that area. So right now, it allows us to, we, we take care of basically all of the services. We provide building inspections for the homes that are built there, uh, planning services, engineering, we do all of that. And we collect the fees that are charged for those services. So if they file a subdivision application, Cache County, we run it through, we collect the fees. Uh, building inspections, all of that, we collect the fees. But we do not collect any property taxes or, or any other taxes that would help pay for what we do up there. So the discussion was Cache County or Summit, or not Summit anymore, Powder Mountain is going to be expanding into Cache County. The only access for them to do that comes through Weaver County. And it's likely that they would want us to continue to do the services that we're already doing. But what does that look like if, if they're really building twelve hundred units or whatever it is? Maybe there's something additional that the county should get for providing the services up there. So we wanted to just put that out there to you and see what your thoughts are on changing that interlocal agreement, updating it. So that the county is rightfully being compensated for the work that we're putting in. You know, for planning and engineering, we, we actually probably lose money on those services. Building inspection, we make some money. But overall, what is fair, and that's what we need to figure out if we're going to continue to, to provide those services for Cache County.
I think we're going to for the foreseeable future, aren't we?
Yeah.
I, I think we need to, I think we need to revise the agreement.
Absolutely. I have a copy that readily available that I can get.
Yeah.
Print it, printed, please.
Offered now, yeah.
And, oh, they have twelve homes in there right now?
Yeah, they, it's about, yeah, it's something like that. So right now, it's not a big deal because it's a very limited area. But if this opens up to the entire area that Cache County wants to develop, because they do not have access and will not have access through Cache County.
Regardless of how big it gets, if we have this in place, if we have a revised version in place, then if it gets big, we're covered and.
Correct.
Yeah, it's, it's time to start narrowing down this because it's, it's an expense to us.
Exactly.
I just, yeah, it's, we need to be fair to the taxpayers, Weaver County, they're not subsidizing our good friends on the north side, right?
I agree.
It's, it's time to probably have that discussion at a higher level.
Well, uh, okay, I'll do it this week. How's that?
That'd be great. You, you going up there, they coming down now?
Both.
Both.
Okay, we did, I think we wanted just to bring that to your attention.
Yeah.
And now conversations can start, yeah, so.
Let's go.
Anything else you guys wanted to bring up as part of that? Lauren, I think, do you have a, a draft agreement that you've been working on?
Haven't yet, but I wanted to make sure we talked to you before.
Perfect.
Anytime.
That's great.
We can, I can start on it now.
Excellent, okay.
Well.
So one quick, has Scott Park looked at this to give us an idea? I'd like to have, I mean, I don't have a clue. Should they pay twenty five percent of the property tax to us, fifty percent? I wonder if Scott could look at what our cost.
How about I should?
I actually did, yeah, I actually emailed Scott about it. Um, so he said stone removal costs for Summit Road were two hundred ninety one thousand in twenty three and twenty four. And two hundred and four thousand in twenty four, twenty five. So. Um, that's kind of what we'd be looking at trying to split. He didn't give me any breakdown on what that would be, but just, just the numbers of what it's actually costing.
Yeah, what we need to do is establish a baseline so that, you know, we don't have to re, we don't have to negotiate every year with them. Is that here's what the percentage is.
Yeah.
As they add homes, we automatically get our share without having to go, well, you've added four more homes, you didn't tell us about it. So whatever, that's a contract we need to have in place.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I agree.
So, so, uh, just to be clear, I'm meeting with them Wednesday. The council for, there's, there's these four members coming on the council. And we're gonna be here at ten o'clock in the morning.
Yes.
So you're gonna be there?
I will be there. Uh, Rick, Charlie and Tammy will be there as well for that conversation.
Are you meeting before you leave to go up there?
Just, just here, not to go up to Powder Mountain. Who's coming up there? Um, whoever you would like to come up there.
I don't care, but one of you'd like.
Uh, I think Rick, probably Rick, Charlie and I will come up there.
Okay. So Rick, Charlie and I will come up.
Yes, yeah, three of us.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Yeah, that's great.
All right.
Do you need me to add all the ten o'clock?
Would you like Lauren there?
That'd be great.
Okay.
The BJ wouldn't hurt. We, and we're just gonna talk about that, that, that. We're also gonna talk about the JDC.
Yeah.
So just, we'll ask them some questions, but we need to bring this up. Hey, look, it's about time you're sharing some of the honey.
Yeah.
Yep. Add that to your agenda.
It's on there. We're just, they're gonna ask us a lot of questions. It's basically fact finding and we're not gonna attack them. They've got, they don't even. None of them have been up there.
Right.
They need to know what they're, they need to put their feet on the ground.
So they haven't visited the site?
No, but they will on Wednesday. We're going up.
So you're taking the four council people up there?
I need the van, yeah.
Yes, I've already got it scheduled for you.
Good man. Gotta create these opportunities.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Take your mosquito repellent, just telling you.
Okay, you can grab it Tuesday night if you'd like.
No, I'll come in on Wednesday morning, grab it.
Great, good.
Okay.
Glad you're doing that.
All right, agenda item nine, adjournment.
Uh.